Tuesday, we're going to call this meeting order if you want to please rise for the dedication.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we ask you for your at your blessings on this gathering here tonight. We ask for your guidance and the wisdom to engage in meeting pool discussion that will allow us to work together to make good decisions for our city. And that will glorify your holy name. Father, let us always be mindful of our purpose as leaders and to listen carefully and thoughtfully to the concerns of our citizens. And we pray that you will watch over all of us and walk beside us all as we go about our daily lives. We ask all of these things in that your son's Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America. It is good reward for all which stands one nation under God, in the big world with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any announcements? Where are we stood up people calling in here hang on. Guys, there's a couple of seats. There's a couple of seats.
Okay, I have an announcement from the EDC. We have the meet and greet on April thirteenth, five P M. to seven P M. at the Deer Run Golf Course. We inviting all businesses into town and have some snacks with us and some drinks and have some networking going on. The other thing I'd like to say is for the chief, I want to commend him for getting that auxiliary abatement grant. Really think that's something great for our city and I want to commend him for doing that.
I have one thing.
Yes ma'am.
I'd like to say thank you to everyone that came out and helped with the Easter event. It was a huge success. We had a lot of kids and parents that showed up and I think they all had a blast. We had thousands and thousands and thousands of eggs for those kids. And we just, we couldn't have done it without the support of the volunteers and the people that came to help. So, thank you for doing that and a great job, Fire Department, Police Department, the city.
I'm gonna tag on the back of you and then I'll let Jeff have the floor. I want to talk about that same event Saturday, about the problems that we had with the, the lack of porta potties and bathrooms. And I want to apologize for not getting with our Public Works Director and getting him to order some, some porta potties out there. I'll take the heat for it. I should have known and I didn't. And what the result was, we didn't have any bathrooms, porta potties or anything. So, I deeply apologize for that. Any other announcements besides Mr. Urban here? Anybody? Go ahead, you got the floor Jeff.
Okay, how long do we need to speak? Couple of minutes?
Well, what are, what are you, how much do you need?
Well, I usually keep start about an hour, but.
Start outside.
No worries. I can keep my distance.
I started my stop point here. I'm just gonna kind of stand to the side so.
That's fine.
Jeff Urban, I'm the proud superintendent of Quineland ISD and I appreciate Council letting me come here to speak tonight. And I feel like I'm among friends with the guys here and know several people. So, I wanted to talk to you briefly about the school bond that we've called that will be voted up on May sixth. There's a fact sheet in front of you. Now, in my role twenty-four seven, all I can do is inform. So, I can't advocate. So, I'm not here to try to sell you as to vote a certain way. Can't advocate for, can't advocate against, but I can inform. So, I appreciate the opportunity to do that. So, what we did, we took a four-page flyer and condensed it into two and put what we thought was the most important thing right up here in front. The legislature several sessions ago strapped us with this saying on the very bottom of a bond that says this is a property tax increase. Well, if you are raising your rate, that is true. If you're not raising your rate, it's somewhat misleading because in our case, the rate stays the same and I'm going to talk about that. So, the only rise anyone would see in their school taxes would be a result of your appraisals going up. Because we're not, we're gonna stay at a dollar four. Whether it passes or whether it fails, we're gonna stay at a dollar four. So, you're not going to see that rate change. So, when people say, well, that's a tax rate hike, no, it's not. We're staying at a dollar four. And the reason we're able to do that, we recently paid off a bond and we have nine years to go on our last bond. So, we need the IMS rate to pay off the last bond, but we have some capacity for paying off Ford High School. So, that builds us the opportunity to ask to borrow the twenty-five million to do the things that are on this sheet. So, I want to go over those quickly and I'll make it quick. So, make sure if anything, you read this and understand what you're saying because people read that and immediately they go, well, made my mind up. So, what's proposed first and foremost is school safety. So, I wear one of the things that opens the new locks that we've tried and we have really enjoyed these. We have these on our daycare and our learning center and that allows you to get in any door that it's programmed to. What we'd do for police, they'd be able to get in any door they wish. So, if an emergency were to occur, instead of us sliding a bunch of keys that look like this across the table and say, you gotta figure out what key that is because you gotta go. We slide ten of these across, they grab that and immediately they get in every door in the building because every one of them will be key. So, that's the first part of safety. Then we've got our transportation department. Some of you been out there and saw that. We're in dire need of a new transportation apartment. Our old one was a salvage yard, I believe originally. Deferred maintenance. This is to make sure we have good roofs and good H V A Cs for the kiddos. Make sure that they're cool and we're not getting rainwater into the building and black mold and so forth. And then the last, we're out of room at our high school. We're out of room. Don't have an extra classroom anywhere. So, we want to add on to that where we can add more vocational training, vocational classes. So, over here it talks about how this was proposed and right here talks about early voting, where to go. If you remember this, May first and second, the Monday, Tuesday, May first and second, you can come up to the admin building and vote from seven to seven. Early voting will be there. Election day voting will be across the street at the Quineland City Council Chamber on May sixth. So, if you turn this over, gives you a little historic data. One, where our tax rate compares to other schools in the county. Two, what it's been. And if you look there, you see the IMS rate. So, there's two different pots of money. And let me explain that real quick. M and O is our day-to-day operations, paying our salaries, the light bill, the water bill, paying for buses, all of that. IMS is only what we approve to be built. The rate covers that. So, that's what we're asking to keep the same and that will continue to give us the ability to do that. We dropped the tax rate twenty cents in the last four years. We want to make sure our seniors know, apply for the sixty-five and older because we don't want anyone paying more taxes than they have to. So, need to make sure people understand that. And then some financial facts down here at the bottom about where we stand. So, we do have good credit ratings. We've always had superior ratings on our first or we would get good bond rates. This goes through. I'm available at any time to show you anything or answer any questions you have. And I don't want to open it up to take questions, but.
I just got, I'd just like to ask one quick question because we do have a, a big audience here today, not to mention our YouTube. I think everybody, I'm getting this from quite a few people. Everybody understands the no new tax and all that. The question that, that I'm hearing and I can't field the question, but is what happens in two, three, four, or five years with this twenty-five million? Is when the twenty-five million coming directly from the, from the paying off of the, how many, where's the twenty-five million coming from?
We're gonna borrow that money.
Okay.
We're gonna, that gives us, we have the capacity to go out and borrow that amount of money without raising the rate at all.
Okay. A lot of the, what I've seen and heard is what is going to happen in that next two to five years? I mean, we're borrowing money now. How are we gonna pay for that without having an increase in the?
The ten cents will go forward for the.
The IMS, your interest and sinking fund? Okay. I, I have to, we'll have to another time when it's going on. We, all municipalities have I S. and M and O. So, okay.
We do have two informational meetings. On the eighteenth, we're doing one for Spanish speaking because we've got people who feel more comfortable with him than that. But on the twenty-second at Butler, show up, I'll give you a deli bar.
I have little babies.
Do you like that?
You got some little babies.
Yeah, something. You'll get something.
You said that's the twenty-second?
Yes, on Thursday, seven P M. at Butler Intermedia. Both of them are at seven P M. One's on Tuesday, one's on Thursday. So, and I think, I say the twenty-second, I think it's the twentieth.
You said twenty-second.
Yeah, I think it's the twentieth, next Thursday, a week from this Thursday.
That'd be between this.
The twentieth. So, I want to make sure I get that correct. But.
Thank you.
We're no great schools in the bedrock of a strong community and we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to, to keep it that way. You know, appreciate the support you give whether the bond passes or fails. But a committee of people like you put this proposal together to the school board. That's how it came about. So.
Vote yes for our kids. No, it's vote for, not, it's either vote for for our kids or you're put the other side, but vote for our kids. Protecting our kids. If y'all watch TV like, you better protect your kids.
Thank you y'all.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? I'm gonna call on Rhonda real quick. Rhonda, I'm gonna put you on the spot here real quick. Tell us just a, this is Rhonda Petrie, by the way. She's our new. Uh, yeah, she's our new finance and operations, but tell us just a, just a few things about yourself. Where you come from, how much experience and all that.
Um, I was four, no, I'm. I worked in Greenville for the last four years and before that I worked at a metal, I mean a powder coater in Rowlett. So, I did all their stuff there and we had a building, one company in Rowlett and one in Terrell. So, I had eighty-five people that we took care of over there, employees and. I was the office man. It's my husband. We've been married too long if he wants to talk to me. But I go to church out at Harvest Bible Church. Anybody ever want to come, you can come see me. You know, he goes there. But, what else did you want me to say?
That, that, that's, that's fine. I mean, I, I want to make sure that you're welcome here. We're excited to have you. Can't wait till you get your feet on the ground and get running.
I'm running. I've tried running my dad.
But I want to go ahead and do that and I, you're more than welcome to stay and I'm not trying to run anybody out. But I know a lot of people would rather be home than sitting here listening to all this.
Oh, no, I'm gonna.
So, it's, it's up to you to do that. Mary, you wanna go next on citizen's input? Any other citizen's input? I want, we're doing announcements, obviously. Any citizen's input related to the agenda item real quick? Anybody? No? Okay.
I just wanted to expand on what Robin and several others have mentioned about Market on the Lake Saturday. It was a huge success, I felt. Keep West Walk Me Beautiful, it was our first outing for that event. It was our first time to ever have a raffle. And I have some figures here that I want to share with everybody because I'm very proud of it. We collected eleven hundred sixty-nine dollars total.
Really?
Most we've ever. All that was plants, plant sales and then the raffle tickets. And so, after our expensive of buying plants and so forth and so on, we profited seven hundred thirty-four dollars. That's again, another first for us. For Keep West Walk.
That's excellent.
So, I just wanted to thank our sponsors to the raffle and I know that a lot of you contributed and a lot of you won. Thank you for buying raffle tickets. Dale's Burgers, Groom and Sons, Two Mile Boat and R V Storage, Deer Run Golf Club, Lake Walk Me R V Center, Leon and Robin, Rancheros, Mexican Grill, Fish and Nutrition, Lighthouse Barbershop and so be it. And we really appreciate the support of our sponsors because we just were amazed at turnout. We, we sold out of every plant. We had nothing left.
Can you real quick remind everybody what?
The officer. You made the announcement, you got a bounder the last.
Oh, you brought us out.
What was that?
They made an announcement, I guess on the public system on their, whatever. Our plants were half price. So, everybody came.
Was it, were they half price?
Yes. Yeah, it's very end, it's very end.
So, real quick, because a lot of people don't know, what, what the monies y'all are raising, what does that gonna go toward?
Well, we have several projects. We do yards of the month. We do the most improved property, whether it be business or whether it be a residential home that's been improved. We maintain a little library over here at the park. We have these trash things every four times a year, which we're having one Saturday in cooperation with the city. So, at the wastewater treatment plant on Ravico Road, we'll have dumpsters out there available to our residents that have a water bill or our driver license that has their West Walkin for us.
Okay. And, and isn't there something about the signs on each end or something?
Yes, we plan on putting up signs coming from the Two Mile Bridge and also coming from Quineland in our city limits to denote West Walkening and we're hoping to get support of the service organizations to have them help put their logos on the bottoms of the signs.
Okay.
Something you need to also mention, Mary, too, is that you are totally funded by donations. There's no money from the city. You do all of this yourself. So, you gotta be very proud of yourselves.
Thank you, Robin.
Oh, yeah. We have a, a business improvement award also. And we give them, yeah, we do. Your most improved business on, mostly along two seventy-six. So, we appreciate the support.
Well, thank you very much for coming out and I, and I, again, I'm not trying to run you off.
No, we're saying.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. You helped, you helped. So, any other citizen's input?
I've got some stuff. I'm sure mine has to wait till the end. Yeah.
Is it non-related or whatever? Or is it regarding one of the, because you got something, something with the agenda. We got y'all on the agenda.
We have it on the agenda for the Market on the Lake. So, I've got that. But we need to talk about setting up for the restrooms to get those fixed and two or three other things like that.
Well, that, that'll be at, well, let's, it won't take long to get down there to that.
All right, we might.
To that, that part of it. Is there anybody else that's got any other citizen's input announcements that I may have missed or anything? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda item. A through, A through L, approval of amendments for March seventh and fourteenth. Approval of bills and those to be paid for March of this year, approval of the financial reports for March of this year, the court report for March of this year, police department report for March of this year. Public Works, if nobody's yet met, met Paul yet, Paul Thompson. He's been with us for a few months now, hasn't he?
December.
December? I don't know. If anybody's missing or whatever, this is our outstanding Paul. He come, he's calling East Paul. But we've, now he's just Paul. He comes to us from East Walken. He's been around.
Sergeant Thompson.
Yeah, Sergeant Thompson is a great guy. Anyway, the Public Works Worker Report, the Public Works, Public Works Reports, Permit Report, Code Enforcement Report, E D C Minutes from January, Jan-, November of twenty twenty-two, January, February, March of this year, Keep to Walkenie Beautiful Minutes, February of this year, and the Planning and Zoning Minutes. The Chair would entertain a motion on that.
I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
On, hey, is Mike here? Oh, there you are. On your director's report, I highlighted on here that there's something about an F one fifty that was stolen. I don't know anything about that. What, I have some questions. Do you mind if I ask about that? Because that was just kind of vague. I don't know if maybe that happened during the time when I had to step off last year off the council. I don't know how long ago that was.
That was last summer.
It was? Okay.
It was, it was, it was during, between the summer and the fall. It wasn't that long ago. It's probably.
The chief says it was in July.
July, okay.
So, I just have a few questions just to kind of clarify it for me. Was this vehicle stolen while it was on the job or off the city property? Or was it someone that took their vehicle home and it was stolen?
Our wastewater treatment facility was broke into and they went down there and stole it from, where the plant's at.
Okay, okay.
And ended up, I think wrecking it somewhere on seven fifty-one and told the engine. So.
Was it, was this one of, I know we had purchased some newer vehicles. Was this one of those?
No, this was the two thousand sixteen truck that we paid off recently.
Will our, will the insurance, I'm sure we got insurance on it. Will it have the K full replacement value for a newer user?
They actually gave us a little more than what we anticipated.
Okay, so the city won't have to come in and supplement during.
No, no, we just recently got the check and we're now looking at trucks.
And my last question is, because that happened, are we kind of stepping up measures to make sure that security is.
We did. Good question, good question.
Kevin basically, as soon as that happened, had to start reaching out to the E D C and different security services. And I promise you now, if anyone sets foot on that property, we got them.
Okay, perfect. You had to have all the questions.
We've also got.
Why don't you expand, one of y'all expand on that?
Well, for security reasons, we can't say what.
Ah, yeah, okay, 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 okay.
But I promise you that.
Okay, sorry. Fair enough. Fair enough, fair enough. You're right, you're right.
We also, to, to answer your last question there, we also will be having tracking on all of our vehicles and equipment fairly soon.
Perfect.
So, that's, I mean, even like the trackers, like tobacco and mini Xs and.
That's what I was talking about.
Triagers and everything. So.
Yeah, they went above and beyond on the security measures to make sure that we have video surveillance. We got trackers on all the equipment. So, if anything happens now, we, we got.
I, I don't want to put you on the spot here. I just didn't know what happened. I saw that on there. I thought, we had a vehicle stolen?
Yeah, last July, it's kind of broke into the plant.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And I have a question from one of the minutes, just.
Which one?
Uh, March fourteenth.
Uh, for which minutes?
Uh, March fourteenth, the city council minutes.
Town.
We had put down that we were going to have a town hall meeting on April twenty-second and we've scheduled that yet.
I think that we've scheduled it. I thought you did last time.
It's, it's going to be April the twenty-second from ten to twelve. It's gonna be at, at the chamber here.
Okay.
Just my wondering, that's in the, the last meeting of March that we have, the twenty eighth meeting. Those were the.
Okay.
That'll be next one.
That's ten to twelve? Yeah, I got it. Okay, all right.
Ten to twelve on the twenty-second. Do you need a moderator for that?
Well, we don't. Yeah, we, now, we didn't regret using moderator.
That, the council is the one who.
Yeah. Um, any, any other thing on the consent agenda? If not, the Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, A through.
I'll second it.
Pam's second. All in favor?
Kevin Peterson.
We are in.
Amber, Robin, Marj.
Christopher Kent.
It is unanimous. Moving on to old business. Seven A, discussion and or take action on three hundred West Ravico Road. Shannon, you're up. Shannon is our coding force. None of you, y'all haven't there yet. She is.
So.
Oh, there she is.
On this one, we had tabled it because we discovered that we kinda had a place for tiny homes, but not exactly. It was just by definition. So, we actually have an ordinance that will place them in locations. It should come up next month for P and Z and for council. We're gonna stick them, the plan is to put them in manufactured housing, S F four, which allows for manufactured housing already and in planned development where it's, so the development is controlled.
Okay. And this is something, I don't know if y'all remember, it's been a few months ago that we were talking about this. I believe both the property owner and the property manager were in house during that. Okay.
Yeah, they actually wanted to go to R V so that they could have tiny homes or R Vs. Since then, they have moved in full-size homes. And if in the future they tried to do tiny homes, it being rezoned, the R V would do them no good because that's not where it's gonna be anyway.
And Esragus has basically put the brakes on R Vs around this lake. They, there's no, you're not gonna get a development and put R V park anywhere near the lake right now. And they won't allow it. They won't allow it. Okay, moving on. Item seven B, discussion and or take action on Market on the Lake. Items to be considered. Consider resignation of market board members. Y'all got this in your, in, yeah, it's in the back. It's a, this is from April of twenty twenty-one, right?
Thank you.
Sir.
Shannon has a question for you.
Where's Shannon?
I asked her. So, on that tiny art home thing with the three hundred Ravico Road, I thought we were untabling that to make a decision. As to whether to deny or pass it.
Because it was tabled.
It was, does discussion and take action. We did last, when it came forward, we tabled it. So, we kind of untabbed a certain decision.
Do we need to make that before we adopt the new rules?
I mean, the, this, the three hundred West Ravico Road is sort of, it's a moot point. So, if we don't make a decision on it, we had it brought up on, on this agenda. If there's no decision, we made it, had a discussion, we talked about it. If there's no vote, no decision, then it ties on the table and we're done and we won't pass it. It's, it's, it's gone.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a moot subject.
Okay.
Is that a recommendation we deny?
If that's okay.
I just said, no, we had to vote on it.
Not necessarily.
Um, I, I, I'm not, I don't have a copy of that, of the A quarter point. I, I remember it, but I, I can't seem to find it in this package. And if you got it, uh, yeah, this, this is it. We don't, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time. I think everybody's aware of it. But back in April, April of twenty-one, we formed the committee by resolution. On for Market on the Lake, it's actually West Walkenie Farmers Market Committee is what the resolution read. And at that time, the resolution was written for no more than twelve, but no less than five members. And that's the consider the resignation. The, the members that are on there, there's only a couple of people that are still on there from the original twelve. Was there twelve or was it eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. So, there's only a few. That's Chris, Pam, Kathy, and then. Oh, Ed Lina still on it? Okay, I haven't seen her in a long time. Okay, so what we're, we need to, we need to get all this worked out and get it, get it established because all, we didn't do this last time. And twelve from a committee is way too many people. It used, it used to take forever to get a, a quorum together. So, we're gonna knock it down to seven members on that. And we need to talk about new members. And there's, there's just some things we need to work out that we'll do in a workshop once we set a date for it. Because we have a lot to go over, stuff specifically receipts to or from the vendors that, you know, you, when you rent the space for the vendor, the. the receipts you get, we probably need the originals in-house, because the auditors are likely going to be asking for that. And then y'all can have copies if that would work for y'all. It, you agree with that, Annette?
I'm sorry, I'm free in this. Would you say that again?
I'm saying that the, the, the original receipts that they give to the vendors, we need the original, whatever they've got originally, and they can make copies, we'll make them copies for their records. That way, because, because we've, we've, I said, we feel like the auditor's going to be asking for that pretty quick.
That when, when you book somebody, do you give them a receipt?
No, not all the time. We used to. We were, we had a receipt book and we were writing everybody receipts. Then they started saying, we don't want that, and just throwing it in the trash. So I just started with that spreadsheet that I give you, and I check them off and I write in how much they pay.
Okay, uh.
And that always comes, she always gets that with the amount.
Let's, let's just set a date for a workshop and, and hammer all this out, because we're going to have to do that. We really feel the auditors, anytime you bring in cash into a municipality, unless it's a water bill or whatever, auditors are going to ask millions of questions on it, and we need to have copies of everything. And where the money came from and how it came in. Right now, we're giving you guys a receipt for the money, the cash you bring in, but auditors don't like cash. They do not like cash at all. They, they understand and they're okay with water bills, but not any other kind of cash. They're just real funny about that. So let's go ahead and set the date for a workshop, and let's hammer that out, and let's get all this behind us if we can.
But we should be able to go ahead and accept the membership.
Yeah, we can, right, the next night, we can, the next meeting, we can go right. We can do that. And I'll go ahead and take the, oh, Pam, I would, Kathy.
Kathy, you want to take the lead? You're just asking for the resignation, to approve the resignation of the first members. There are verbal resignations.
Yes, the first part of it is, we only accept the verbal resignations. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There's seven of those that were on the original papers that we received. There's three new ones that we got, and then, of course, there's four of us that are still on there that have been from the beginning. So we'd like to request to reduce the number of board members from twelve to seven, which would make the quorum four.
So you've got three now, and item number two is potential, the four potentials, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Okay, item five is.
Oh, okay, existing now, okay, I see it now.
Item five is current members.
Okay, I got it.
And then item two are the new members that we just got.
Five, six, seven, that's eight.
Seven.
That's eight.
There's, there's four there, so that's, that's a total of eight.
So you're going to have it at eight for now.
Um.
We can't have an equal number. We need a lot.
Oh, we had Kathy. Well, Kathy, she, she's not on mine.
So take Kathy out and put hers in ultimately, you got yourself.
Yeah.
Okay.
And she's.
Yes.
Okay, I will make a motion to ex, to accept the first verbal re- resignations of Alanches, Alphonse, Bayenti, Brittany Martin, Courtney Francis, Jan Arul, Molly Bell, and Stacy Thomas, and add three new potential members, Kathy Weary, Allison Bell, and Rhett Byers. Also to reduce the number of board members from twelve to seven for the Waukele, uh, West Waukele Market on the Lake.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, can I have another second, just so I, I mean, no offense, but you're only admitting that, so, it might, I don't know. I'm going to need a, need a second.
Pam can't second it.
Pam can't second it, no.
You said it's going to be one of them.
It's got to be Leon or.
I'll second.
Leon seconded. All in favor?
Okay, and then we had standards.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, let's approve the members first, and then we'll move on to the next one. Uh, all in favor on the, on the seven members that were named?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
I can't vote. Robin Myers.
I'll abstain.
We have, uh, three votes and two abstain. Uh, okay, uh, let's, uh, we need to set a date for a workshop. You want to do this like an early evening, like six, six-thirty or something? Nobody wants to do it on Saturday, I'm sure, but.
It looks like in this resolution, it says their committee is supposed to do that.
Well, this, that whole thing, that resolution, I don't know, it's, 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 it's a dead resolution, isn't it? It's never, we've never called it the West Waukele Farmers Market, what, what is it, what is it called? We've never had twelve members, or I don't think we did, one, maybe for a month or something?
For a couple months.
Yeah. We've never, we've. It, it, it never was really set up. It was never, there, we've never, and I'm, I'm going, I'm just stating the facts. We've never had minutes. We've never had an agenda. Uh, it's just, we, that was wrote up, and then we started doing the market on the lake, and then just, we're calling it market on the lake since its inception, but on the resolution, it's a totally different name.
Kristen, didn't we, didn't you present, didn't council adopt policy for the market?
Yes, sir.
I don't, I haven't seen that. I don't, I don't, that's been two years ago.
It was like June of twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There should be a set of policies that have already been adopted.
And, and we can bring those back in during the workshop, and, and, and just so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but as far as this resolution we got today, in my mind, just correct me if I'm wrong, but it's kind of a, a dead resolution.
Which one you got today?
The one that, that you were just looking at.
The one that was adopted in twenty.
Twenty, yeah, April of twenty twenty-one, yeah. I mean, I don't know. I don't know, I know it's called it.
You, you've still got the committee that was created by that resolution. You've just amended it. And as, I mean, it was just a motion to amend what was created with the twelve-member board to a seven-member board.
Well, that and the name of it, the name of it's, now, we've never called it what it's called in that resolution. I don't know, I'm just, I mean.
But I see what he.
We're just going to kind of reinvent the will and just start the whole thing all over again.
Name it wise, you could clean that up with just another resolution, just like with the reducing the board members to.
Can you get that?
I think that's what he's saying, is, is we need to redo this resolution in order to make sure that on the books or on the record that were correct.
Yeah, and we're going to, we, we need to, to, for, for a lot of reasons, but we need to just do the workshop and just kind of start all over again, start from scratch again, because we've been doing this for a year and a half, a year and a half?
Thanks to you.
Is that, is that too confusing for everybody? It's, I mean, I know it's a lot, but.
Insulting that you want to turn around and you want to change the name. Because there's one person out here that wants to change the name on here. I've seen him on Facebook.
I don't want to change the name. I understand the resolution calls it one thing and y'all call it another.
But, okay, we have never really had a meeting, as so to speak, as far as minutes, because we have very few people, so we never had a quorum when we needed enough people with having twelve.
That's what I'm saying.
So it became a discussion. Okay, we had a discussion about the name of the market, and it was decided it would be called Market on the Lake, because it's on the lake and that's it.
This is not to bash anybody or anything. I'm always.
And that's where the minute should have been done, it should have came to council, and council should have approved that, because the, the resolution is written one way.
Right.
Yeah, there's nothing against anybody.
Never seen that.
The reason that we're bringing this up is because it's not established, and the city is receiving cash money, and we can't answer for it, because I promise you, at a minimum, they're going to ask for the resolution. The auditor will be asking for the resolution, and that resolution doesn't match anything.
And that's fine. We'll do whatever you got.
It's not against anybody, though. Don't take any offense to any of it. We're trying to make it right.
The thing I'm confused about, somebody out there wanted to call it Farmer's Market. You don't call it a Farmer's Market when you've got one vendor that has fruit and vegetables.
Well, this is something that we need to talk at, at the workshop, not tonight. This is not, you know what I'm saying? We'll set, let's get a date set up, and we'll hammer all these details out, and then we'll be smooth sailing the rest of the way. Okay, all right. Um, y'all got any dates? I'm going to let, let you guys.
Nothing.
The members, y'all call a date that y'all like or would like to have, and then we'll take it.
Nothing next week.
Huh?
We have the town hall meeting. We have the town hall meeting on the twenty-second, which is Saturday.
Well, we can do it on a weekday, uh, I don't think it'll take that long. I'm, I'm going to guess thirty, forty-five minutes to have a little workshop, maybe. Should be no more than an hour, anyway.
I've never seen one better than that.
We typically put a time limit on it just for that reason. If the, the end is an hour, it just cuts off quick.
Well, we're going to try to keep it short and sweet and to the point, so we, you do have a good point, though. Point taken. Funny point, but it's a point taken. Y'all got any, you got any dates?
Would you see the twenties, the twenty-fifth of April be good?
Uh.
I'll just throw that out there.
Uh.
It'd be next Tuesday. That would be next Tuesday.
Tuesday week.
Tuesday after.
Tuesday week, happy Tuesday week.
That's, as far as I'm concerned, it's all right. Everybody else, Kevin?
I'm putting it in my calendar right now.
Uh, that was the twenty, what, uh, Leon, twenty-fifth, at, uh, what, six-thirty, seven? What do y'all want to do?
Are you, whatever you want to get it, I, I'll kind of make it.
Okay.
You run over cars in that big old truck.
Are you on?
I'm on four thirty.
Twenty-fifth, it's all right, but y'all, we're going to have six-thirty, 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 six-thirty on the twenty-fifth?
One on?
Going twice.
Yeah, so, all right.
For an hour, we're going to set that for.
Set it for an hour.
Let's set it for an hour, okay.
Six-thirty, seven hour.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, I'm going to put that on the agenda.
We have to have something like that.
Yeah, we, we need something like that. Um, I, let's, uh, Chair would entertain a motion for item seven. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, seven B three, yes.
So I'll make a motion and we set the date for, uh, workshop to discuss the market on lake details and develop the, the correct resolution for April the twenty-fifth at six-thirty P M.
I'll second.
Robin's second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
So Robin Myers, I'm sorry.
Okay. It is, uh, three, three yeses and two of things.
Yes.
I didn't, I wrote it on it, or wrote it on a meeting.
Oh, that's right, I'm still stuck on the market on the lake part of it.
Okay, good, I.
So it's unanimous.
Yes, it's unanimous then.
I'm still stuck on that one. Okay, all right, moving on to new business number eight. Discussion and or take action to approve the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget line item adjustment to add income line number one dot five oh dot oh nine seven for the opioid abatement income and expense line item number one eight zero one zero one for the opioid abatement expense. Somebody want to explain this, because I don't have enough facts on it.
Okay, this, this came from the Texas Trust. It's a controller's office, and they set up a trust fund. This was established by the, the Texas Legislature in two thousand and twenty-one to receive statewide opioid abatement litigation settlement proceeds. And this money is going to be distributed to two cities for, uh, and we got one check. We will probably getting more money, and what you can use this money for is for educational problems, for, for programs for people that do have this problem. And that's, that's, you know, what it's used for.
What else?
That, uh, they said that it's pretty much, that's what it is.
That's just education only?
That will, and, and recover, you know, if they need some kind, some kind of a, you know, I, I know it would recover treatment, that's not enough money for something like that.
I'm just trying to conceptualize some kind of a education, or how, how and where would that come from?
The dangers of doing it.
What?
The dangers of doing it.
Who's, I'm, I'm just trying to.
Like councils, that, someone to sit and educate.
Who's going to do, who, who are we going to get to do this, or what?
Well, I mean, you may have, I know it's off the springs, we're working out programs in the hospital, where they're basically going to use, they're going to give that money to the hospital to use in programs that are appropriate, and then the hospital's going to give other benefits to the city that they, the city can then use generally. So there may be some trades you can do like that.
Is that something you'd be willing to work with us or help us in earnest?
Well, I mean, I.
I'd do it for us, but.
I understand.
You are somebody that lives in this area that, that was hospitalized, and as they come out of the hospital, this would be a program that they could help them with, you know, so the funds could go that way. The hospital could notify us and say, we have one of your citizens that has this, you know, type of illness, and.
I'm just, I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around it, because HIPAA laws, they can't, they're not going to call us and ask us about it. I'm just having a hard time with it.
We could something as simple as set up a speaker.
Huh?
You know, set up an event, that if there was a speaker that would come in and, and give knowledge to the public about drug use. I mean, there's, there's so many simple ways that this could be used. We just got to get our heads outside the box.
You know, in, in the court, when, when somebody gets a ticket for alcohol or something, they, some of them have to take alcohol awareness classes.
Right, right, and, and that's, that's kind of what I thought about, because I know they have a class like that at one of the churches, but, I mean, and, and we could probably work with them somewhat, because all their people are probably not just alcoholics.
What is that amount?
Okay, I mean, there's. And, and that's why I'm saying, I mean, that, that might be able to bring a speaker in, because, I mean, I'm sure a lot of these people that are speaking, trying to help, they're not doing it necessarily for a living, they're doing it because it's their calling, and probably all you're paying for is their expenses and whatever.
Yeah.
So to speak.
Okay.
So, I mean, we just, we would have to sit down and think about it as a council and, and sort of think outside the box and put our heads together.
Oh, do you hate that?
Okay.
That person from you might dis. I know a lot of police departments and fire departments, they have access to Narcan, which is a drug which helps someone who's overdose. If that was money available to you, could you use this money for that as well? Would that be, would, would that be considered treatment?
When I called the controller's office, they do not have a lot of information on it at this time.
I don't.
No, but, I mean, that's, that's what they said, the like, this lady I spoke with, her name was Melissa, and she said, it's right now for education.
Do we carry Narcan's resources?
No, not right now, but I spoke with the Quinlan Chiefs, and there's a company that donates it to them, so they're going to work and get.
Okay, so we'll have Narcan in our trucks. What about you guys? Do you have Narcan in all your trucks?
One truck.
One truck? You, you know, get a horn?
We found the money for it.
Oh, yeah, okay, I hope, maybe it'd be like, you know.
Now, that might be something we can piggyback on.
Try to see.
Let's stay together on that.
Yeah, see, y'all need it before, I mean, wait before they do.
Well, not all places.
Well, I mean, a lot of, you're the ones get to the calls, I mean, the medical calls, anyway.
They want to like the Chiefs, but there's another company that's, uh, there's a company that put it on, and they're going to make a, like a rescue bag for each car and stuff, and it's going to be with them.
Okay.
When we get the rescue bags.
Okay.
I think this is in its infancy stage, and it grows. There may be more information and, and whatever, so, you know, we just, we just got to kind of sit on it for a little bit and, and see what happens, and see what information comes to us.
All right, uh, so, the Chair would entertain a motion on item eight A?
So I make a motion that we approve item eight A to add a budget line, um, twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three line adjustment to add an income for the one point five zero point zero nine seven for opioid abatement income and expense line item eighteen oh one oh one for opioid, opioid abatement expense.
I'll second that motion.
Chris second, all in favor?
Kevin Featherstone.
Leon Myers.
Amber, Robin Myers.
Christopher Kent.
It is unanimous. Moving on to eight, uh, B, discussion or take action to approve Lake Milwaukee Regional Chamber of Commerce to host the second annual jam fest. That is, okay. In the city park for July first, and we got Miss Debbie Darter in the house and Teresa Snyder in the house. Good to see you ladies.
Hi guys, I'm back. So, we'd like to bring the second annual, uh, event to, uh, your park and your city and to open it up to a uh, free to everybody and we'd like to bring some, um, music and vendors and all fun to the kids and what we're asking for is the park and, um, maybe some help from the, um, fire department to have a present there and the, um, police department have a present there and it just made a big fun event just for West Milwaukee and to commemorate the, uh, past, um, council member Calvin Travers and, um, we would like to bring music, um, vendors, food trucks, bounce houses, water slides, some beer wine sales with permission and a letter from the city. Uh, we would adhere to all T A B C regulations. We provide wristbands, rope off area and cells for cell consumption, cooling area and misters inside the tent and port bodies. We're gonna bring our own port bodies. We probably need a little help with the trash if you're willing. So, we're not asking for sponsorship because I don't think that we're gonna be able to afford fire, fireworks at this point, but if we did, then we would like to, uh, request a point for that access and maybe, um, block it off while fire, fire, fireworks were going off, which we did last year, like we did last year, yeah. I, I wasn't there, I was in Mexico.
Very successfully.
Yeah, it was.
I'm very honored.
Yeah.
What about liquor liability insurance?
We would have liquor and liability insurance.
You do?
We will. Um, apply for that, yes sir. And, and li- and liability for the, of the event itself.
And it needs, it needs to name the city as, as.
There you go.
But I was close.
Yeah, we would also like to waive peddler's fee if we can.
Waive what?
The peddler's fee for food trucks.
Oh.
I think you have a, a one-year, one hundred dollar peddler's fee for them. Um, it would just be for that one night and it was, it was a hardship for them last year. Even though I said you can pedal all year long. Cause you'd be the ice cream truck.
I just hadn't heard a call of peddlers, so this thing.
Yeah, this is an event for the chamber, for the West Milwaukee. I mean, we have five cities in our, in our, uh, region, so, and we, um, you guys are obviously our favorites, so we'd like to bring this back in.
We had our health here.
We're giggling.
What, y'all have any input, questions, concerns?
You know, this would be a real good thing for us to use some of our occupancy tax money on, that is, one of the things you can use occupancy tax money on is like just to bring people to your city.
Tourism.
You can if I could prove heads and bets. Now, I've got a few workbench and so that they would, they would get a hotel room for that night. Or Anger Inn or whatever. I, I said Anger Inn because I want a fish.
Well, the people that will be serving alcohol, will you make sure that they have the server?
All, because we have, we're all certified already, we've, and I've got seven years of bartending. I will probably be the Gestapo, um, on that.
Since we serve that already at our other events, we keep that.
Yeah, absolutely.
What does everybody think? Everybody, y'all got any questions or other concern?
I think we need to make sure.
Chief?
For the event last year.
Yeah, we're, uh, one year, so, I was.
I mean, don't, don't come in with gloves on.
We did have some cleanup from the fireworks. There was cleanup. There was some that was left along the lake shore and stuff like that. We had to walk there and get.
They were burning overnight, so they weren't.
And, and one of the issues we had with that is, is we were told it was out and the next day it was still burning, so anyways.
Okay.
Well, the trash cans that we got.
Well, this year we have a dumpster down there, whereas last year.
Well, yeah, for there, but I'm talking about around the park in general.
We can add some additional.
Well, we've got quite a few that we put up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we still have those.
Okay, we could do it, minimize on the trash.
And like, and like she said, I mean, if I heard correctly, in the beginning, she did, she openly asked for some help.
Yes.
Right, so that was, let's make sure that that wasn't hidden, right? Um, but, you know, make no mistake about it, depending on how much trash that is or whatever, it could create a few man or whatever for the city.
Right.
And, I mean, as, as strapped as we already are, that's, that's the only thing I would look at.
Well, you're right about that because last year we spent, I don't know, half a day.
I mean, this event is on a Saturday, correct? I mean, so, so what I would, what I would like maybe think to try to step outside of the box and say, what if we, what if we said that they were gonna give a concessions to either one of the city employees or the park hosts to be the one that cleans up their loose ends? You know, to, I mean, at the end, I mean, at the end of the day.
You would like to give, uh, money to the park host perhaps?
Well, I'm, I'm not, I don't know if it's that person or if it's someone else, but to me, it really needs to be cleaned up. If this event's on Saturday, right, Sunday, it doesn't need to sit there blowing the wind all day Sunday until Monday when we get here. And then we get here and there's two sewer backups and a water leak and they don't get out there till Tuesday. That's why, I mean, it needs to be, I mean, it's just like anytime we have a, a, something at our house, right? We don't, we don't just let it sit for two or three days and then we clean it up. It needs to be cleaned up the very next day.
So hire somebody on Sunday, you can put it back like it was on Friday.
That's right. And that's kind of what I'm getting at. I mean, I, I think, I think we need, this needs to, Monday morning, it needs to look like it was the park.
Like you remember there. It's like going and messing. Making something and putting it back just like it was.
So, I mean, I want you to chime in on that because, you know, you, you kind of have to work with the crew.
Well, that's, that's what we always do. It doesn't matter who the event is, we end up coming back through and making sure everything's picked up and cleaned up. But maybe we could add an additional dumpster, I mean, just for trash, because there was more than what the dumpster could handle. We had to load up tray, uh, the little red trailer with all the additional trash and all that off, so.
There were thousands of people.
Oh, yeah.
Which is something that West Milwaukee wants, right?
No one's saying we don't want that.
Cause this brought, this brought a lot into the area. Probably we just come down here just for a small event. So, when it's a good event, it's hosted by the chamber and then we've got the Travers that also are putting in their vans and stuff, so we're bringing in a lot of extra people.
What time? I don't see the time.
About thirty or six?
Five o'clock to ten o'clock Saturday, but we would need Friday night to start setting up for trailers, the, uh, the van stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's probably gonna need to provide additional power down there for the vans.
I don't think we've had to.
I don't, we didn't, I don't think.
I think that's here was the first year we didn't bring down the January for the same.
We didn't hear. They figured it out to where they contained what we had. So, let's just say we have the same mess, right? Because we're gonna, I mean, people have fun, there's gonna be a mess. That's a reality. I just want, I, I'm wanting to make sure that we, it's cleaned up and looks good Monday morning. So, let, let's say that we have somebody go out on Sunday. Could one person be able to clean up that mess on a Sunday without busting their tail or could two guys do it in a decent day?
Well, it took five of us last year or so.
And a golf cart. Five of you?
Took five of us until, until after lunch time.
Because we had one dumpster or because of what? Just, I, I'm trying to, so I'll know what to take that, I mean.
That, which is why I offered, you know, even trying to put an additional dumpster there. The lessons we learned last year is it doesn't matter how committed everyone is to volunteering to, to clean up. There's gonna be trash, so, uh, I don't know, you know, last year we've, I'm sure we could have spent the overtime money to have some guys there Sunday. The only reason we stumbled upon, what we stumbled upon is because some of the guys went fishing and found it, called and said, hey, do we need to get everybody up here to start cleaning right now or what are you gonna do? And we held off until Monday.
But we put cans out, small, the big guy.
We did, we did, and I can't remember which one of the council members asked me to do that last year. I want to say it was Leon, but I can't remember, but we put additional cans out there, but it still wasn't.
Yeah, I know.
And you can't, you know, you can't police wrong people.
So, is that something that we?
You can, but, you know, they were there to have a good time and we want this event. You know, we want to be recognized and we want to bring people in from all around, but at the same time, you can't walk around holding nobody's hand.
Is that something that we can work out internally?
I think so. I mean, Kevin and I could probably sit down and figure out, you know, based on just how last year, imagine this year being these better. We're hoping so, so we probably should sit down and talk and, and strategize on how we can make sure that it's not a hard process.
We don't have somebody there to help with that parking because sometimes we have.
That was in, I remember all cars parked along the park road all the way down, so getting out was.
Yeah.
So I think it's something you have to talk about and then we need to get back to her or.
Well, we have a class, you know, like the chamber in what, a couple weeks, so I'll probably stop by and sit down.
Before, before that class, before you have to be in her space, you and I need to have this resolved and you cover her with the.
And we'll consent on talks so we can make sure we're helping, you know, get you whatever you need.
Yeah, I'll work at the Coiland, uh, the Coiland, um, City of Coiland, so come on down up there, come on up there and, uh, sit down with me. Anytime you want to. My door's always open for you guys. I'm pretty much stuck down there.
I'm usually stuck here, but I, I can work something out.
We wouldn't work something out, we'd meet at the chamber. Alright, um.
Are y'all gonna add some additional port bodies?
Yes, sir. We've already got them all. Uh, four, I believe.
Are you gonna, so we're going to, unless the bathrooms, if the bathrooms are repaired by that time, then we're good. Are you gonna put them out on the ground or are you gonna put them on?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did.
If we have fireworks.
We probably need to split them up and not have them all in one place.
Yeah, I would strategically spread them out.
Yeah, they'll probably deliver on Saturday or Friday.
You can turn early.
I'll, I'll thank for. I don't remember how many we had last year.
It was a park.
A good deal. Yeah, well, apparently we didn't use all the money, so we made it up.
Well, I, I don't know for a big deal reason, but I have a contact that is pretty good. You just have to be prepared in advance. You can't call them last.
No, we already have it worked out. So y'all, we need the park Friday night, but.
Okay, well, let's, uh, the Chair would entertain a motion on the, on the, uh, the, uh, the jam fest, the whole, uh, Calvin Traver the jam fest.
I make the motion. I make the motion that we, that the Chamber of Commerce use the park for this event.
So I want to second that motion with a little caveat to us making sure we figure out the cleanup portion of it after the event. And, and I put that on my, myself, to have that resolution to her within whatever you said two weeks. I'll second that with, with it, making sure we got the cleanup figured out to be back to normal by Monday morning.
Alright, all in favor?
I want a third, yes sir, you go ahead. I want a third with removing the peddler's fee.
Okay, alright, good, good catch.
And also, I would like a copy of the insurance delivered before the event.
Absolutely.
Copy of the liquor, what's it called?
And I will need a letter from the city on letterhead that states that we're allowed to sell here. I'll be pretty soon so I can get that, um.
Yeah, you sure have to have that pretty ready.
You know, you got all the tied down, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, all in favor? Chris Burkett, it is unanimous. Thank you Debbie and Teresa. We look forward to it. It'll be a fun time.
It will be great and if you guys decide to, uh, sponsorship, just.
Okay, thank you, thank you ladies so much.
Go ahead, it's in your package. It's wherever you go. It's on the third page and that next to last page.
Whatever you want.
Whatever you, um, I'm looking at your body, I understand. Thank you guys. We just want to have this community grow and, and, and prosper and everybody have a good time and.
Yeah. Be a lot of fun.
No, sir, I won't be in Mexico, I'll be right here.
Okay, uh, moving on, we're just about to wrap this now, uh, uh, moving on to eight C, proclamation of the National Police Work, Police Week, uh, May fourteenth through the twentieth. Uh, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May thirteenth as a peace officers' memorial day and the week in which May thirteenth falls as the National Police Week. Whereas the members of the law enforcement agencies of West Milwaukee play a central role in safeguarding the rights and freedom of West Milwaukee and whereas it is important to all citizens that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and the members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against, protecting them against violence and disorder and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of law enforcement agency of West Milwaukee unceasingly, unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, um, the West City, uh, the, the West Milwaukee City Council calls upon all citizens of West Milwaukee and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May thirteenth through May twenty-first of twenty-twenty-three as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to the communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the right and security of all citizens. Therefore, I do by hereby, I do hereby proclaim that the week of May thirteenth to May twenty-first of twenty-twenty-three is Police Work Week and will call upon all citizens of West Milwaukee to observe the thirteenth as the day of May twenty-twenty-third as a police, that the Peace Officers Memorial Day in the honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors or fallen heroes. Uh, this is real, it's real close and near and dear to my heart and I think it is to everybody's and we, we need to get something set up going with this, okay? Everybody on board? Yeah, we do appreciate it. We really appreciate it. I, I can't thank you enough and I do every day. Uh, we really appreciate what you do. Moving on to eight D, proclamation of the National Public Works. These guys don't get enough, enough recognition. Um, the proclamation, whereas the public works services provided in our community are an integral, an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is the vital, is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, public buildings and whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services and whereas the quality and effectiveness of, of these facilities as well as their planning, design and construction are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public work officials and whereas the efficiency and of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public work departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Jim Turnpence, Mayor of the City of West Milwaukee, do by, do hereby. Now therefore, I Jim Turnipseed, Mayor of the City of West Hawkeye, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-first through May twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three as National Public Works Week. In the City of West Hawkeye, I call upon all citizens, civic organizations, to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, given, given under my hand in the seal of the City of West Hawkeye, this eleventh day of April of nineteen twenty-three.
Twenty.
Oh, twenty twenty-two. Okay, I thought, because I read it, no, I'm here.
I'll fix that.
Yeah, we're gonna have a little side talk about that. I appreciate everyone's patience, but these are real important proclamations. We can't thank all the guys, and last and certainly not least, the proclamation of the National Firefighters Day. I'm not sure why it's a day, not a week with the firefighters, but whereas the National Firefighters Day is observed each year on May fourth to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, to express gratitude to those that have served in this line of work, and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve, and whereas regardless of the language a firefighter speaks, or the country in which he or she works or resides, all firefighters fight against the same enemy, fire. And whereas firefighters follow a long line of tradition and honor that inspires them to help colleagues, neighbors, strangers alike, and whereas at a moment's notice, firefighters are quick to respond to uncertain situations to mitigate danger and combat the threat of destructive fire in order to protect individuals, families, and the economic being of our community, and whereas the demands of firefighting are accomplished by both personal and physical tolls that all firefighters knowingly accept while risking their lives to protect the lives of others. Now therefore, I Jim Turnipseed, Mayor of City of West Hawkeye, do hereby proclaim May fourth, twenty twenty-three as the National Firefighters Day. In the City of West Hawkeye, I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in the line of work our firefighters, and to recognize the contribution which fire officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, given to me under the seal of the City of West Hawkeye, the eleventh day of April of nineteen twenty-three. Chris, we can't thank you enough for, and your people for what you've done, gosh, in the last year. And beyond, that you guys do continually step up to the plate every day, every night. And we're at home relaxing, unknowingly, what's going on in our city, we really appreciate it. And we need, we're gonna set some things up for you guys, as well as our public works people, as well as our police department, and I can't thank all of you enough. Without further ado. You got citizens input number nine? Do we have any citizens input? No, okay, we've got hands. Go ahead, your name, ma'am?
My name's Chrissy, I just recently bought a house here in West Hawkeye. I moved from DFW, so it's quite the change. So that event that y'all were talking about, we all know that people don't drink responsibly, and there's no taxis or Ubers or lifts in this town, so how does that work?
The PD's own thing.
Yeah.
That's a lot of people.
Yeah. We'll have to coordinate that with the, with the police, and I'm not trying to, because we've done a lot of asking and answering questions, but technically, we're not even really supposed to answer. On citizens input, we're not really even supposed to answer input on those line items. But we will, we will, the police and fire, we'll, we'll all work that out, we always have. Knock on Kormaca, we've never had a problem like that, so it's always been successful. Anything that we do in the park that involves alcohol. Anybody else? Anybody else? Yes, sir. And you are?
I'm Ramsey Lindy.
Okay.
I'm with the Indian Oak Homeowners Association. And I know this is gonna come up at some point fairly soon, I wanted to express some of our concerns we have. I know the guys have been working tirelessly on the sewer system.
Yes.
But pretty soon, we're gonna have twenty-five more homes come onto that system. And I am getting a lot of questions about what, what is going to happen with that. And so, I just want to get that at the forefront of some of the right people's thoughts. And possibly, we're gonna have, we will have a, we're gonna have our next quarterly meeting first Saturday in May, and if we could, it would be great if I could have someone address the homeowners at that meeting.
Okay, specifically regarding sewer?
Yes.
Okay. When is that now?
Oh.
I think it's May sixth.
What, we say?
I want to say it's first Saturday in May, I think it's May the sixth.
What time is it? It's election day.
I don't think, May sixth.
Yeah, that's our election day.
Well, maybe we'll change our date.
We, we, it's, we don't have any elections here, there will be elections in Quinlan. I think the only thing that we can vote on is, is the QST bond. But it's our official day to, for voting, it's kind of strange it's on Saturday, but.
It's seven to seven, so.
I will get you a business card that has all my information so we can meet.
Yeah, now, do you work during the day? And, or?
He makes me work in a yard every day.
Oh, you need to take a break, get home to Michael, and we'll all sit down, and I'm gonna talk about that. We're aware of it, and I, without really, I don't foresee a problem, but.
I have all his contact information.
Okay, okay, okay.
And I know that neighborhood.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lindy. Any other citizens input related to the Gem Fest? Not related to the Gem Fest? Yes, ma'am?
I'm sure I'm gonna upset somebody, but we gotta address this, I'm just gonna spit it out. Okay, the rest. I'm good with that. Okay, the rest, and I appreciate the fact that you said it was your fault that you took responsibility. I don't really feel that was the case, but I think that public work should have taken care of it. I think that the porta potties have been there before, and that should have been handled, that was a city function. You know, that came out because the fire department and because the police department sponsored it. Somehow it came about that it was fire, but it was City of West Hawkeye.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm the lead man here, so it's mine. I understand what you're saying, but it's mine.
Okay, moving on.
Okay.
The rest.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we should have somebody starting on those next Friday.
This Friday.
This Friday.
This Friday?
But in the past, we've had a problem trying to get somebody up there with us to get these workers going. We tried to do, we were doing poor estimates, and I called Michael, he didn't have a key, or he wasn't available. And then, I think he referred to him as his assistant, he wasn't available. Blake went to the office, got a key, while we waited, and they came back. I told Michael, we got the same thing the next day. Okay, I'm not understanding, first of all, why we can't have a key? I'm not gonna steal pipe out of the equipment room, you know? We just needed a key to get in there so that we can get this done. But your phone is never where the voicemail is empty.
I would try it, and I would like to add something to that. I know a place like my job is simple, it's easy.
I'm not saying.
Let me say this.
Let me say this.
We can't be so many. We can't be going back and forth like this.
No, I'm not, I'm not attacking you at all, I don't mean it that way.
Yeah.
I'm just saying we need to fix it, I'm not attacking you.
This is not the time or place for us to be doing this.
That's right, we need to, we need to have the quorum here, so get with Michael or get with me. I think I've got keys, actually, I think I do, I'm pretty sure I do.
We can't argue about.
But, but, uh, get, either get with Michael after the meeting tomorrow, or get with me, we'll work something out, okay? Any other, you got anything else?
I think that's it.
Anybody else have any other citizens input? Billy, I'm sorry, it's good to see you tonight, by the way, I haven't seen you in months. Well.
Hey, you wasn't gonna sit next to me.
I'm not gonna say anything to that.
It's good to see all these people.
Yes, it's very good, I'm really glad that all y'all got to come out. Feel free to come hit me up for a call or something, my phone number, I give my phone number out to everybody. I don't care who's got it all, writing it on the bathroom wall, I need to. I take calls all the time, days, nights, weekends, so don't hesitate to come see me. Without further ado, number nine.
I make a motion with adjournment.
Leon first and Kevin second, all in favor?
Kevin first.
Leon nine.
Chris Burkett.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.